Mr. Sanders, can you make me a host so that I can assist with any of the public comments tonight?
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
And then which Brian is going to start the recording? Are we recording already, huh?
I think it's recording automatically.
Once we broadcast, right? Okay. Great.
Few people who are attendees and his panelists, Beth Bergen.
Yes, John is on twice, I think. He's the ESC kiosk and he's on as himself. And he's hanging up. Apparently didn't like us talking about him. Madam President, at this point, there are no attendees just waiting in the in the room. So I'm not going to make the public comment statement yet until we have actual attendees.
The students who are getting the award, they've been invited to be panelists?
Analysts, yes.
I came in with Ellen Smith as well, so that means it's fine.
We're trying to ensure the students, Mrs. Smith, the Glenbrook teacher is on with us, apparently with a couple of students. They did not all get the link, so I'm trying to get them the link right now. And Ellen, if you can hear me, go ahead and have your students just come in as attendees, and I can promote them up to be participants for the award tonight. If they can just log in. All right, I think our student exit on achievement individuals have all joined now, it looks like.
Good.
So, Madam President, we should be good to start whenever you are ready to start the meeting.
Helps to unmute, okay. Because it's seven o'clock, so I will call the May 18th, 2020 U46 Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux, here. Ms. Nolan?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mrs. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Madam President?
Here. And if we could all please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So the first item on our agenda is accent on achievement. And tonight, we are honoring a group of students, group of fifth grade students from Glenbard Elementary Glen Brook Elementary School. These students won the Illinois Junior Division in the Future Problem Solvers State Competition. They are Manat Ashita, Vishy Lakadi, Veer Gupta, and Juven Ghan. They are all part of the District's Ignite Gifted Education Program. Their coach is Ellen Smith, who is a fourth grade Ignite teacher at Glenbrook. Future Problem Solvers is an international program that aims to develop students' problem solving and critical thinking skills to support a more positive future. Now normally, we would have a board meeting, and these students would come up and receive a certificate, which they will receive. But I do want to read the certificate of achievement that they will each be receiving, and it'll be individual for each of them. So Certificate of Achievement, the Board of Education of School District U46 hereby recognizes Manat Ashita, Vishy Lakadi, Veer Gupta, and Juven Ghan of Glenbrook Elementary School for placing first in the Future Problem Solvers State Competition. Presented this 18th day of May 2020, signed by Board President Sue Kerr and Superintendent Tony Sanders. So congratulations to all of you. And give you a round of applause. And Mrs. Smith, maybe you could talk a little bit and have your students talk a little bit about what they did and what was involved with this whole program.
Sure. Future Problem Solvers is a program that we start doing in August. And they have three competitions that they participate in before they get to state. There's a packet they write in October. And that that was international travel this year, and then they do one in December. And that was gamification, the topic. And then they went to regionals in February. And that topic was also gamification, but just had a different scenario. And then the state one was poverty. And it focused on refugees living in poverty in the year 2045. And they needed to problem solve, come up with 16 problems, choose one as their favorite, 16 solutions for that problem. And then write a whole six paragraph essay. And normally, they would have done a skit, but since we were virtual, there was no skit this year. And I want to say this team also won the Bucky Award, which is named after Buckminster Fuller. And it's the first time that that award was ever given to a junior division team. That means a fourth, fifth, or sixth grade team. And that's for having very futuristic and unique solutions. So they found that a few of their solutions were very futuristic. I think it was like number eight and number 14. And so they had like a, they can tell you about that. So maybe Manat wants to speak next? I can't see them. So are you there, Manat?
I see Veer and I see Yvonne.
Okay, so either one of them, Yvonne, maybe you want to speak? They're gonna get shot. I can't see them at all. Orisha, are you on? But I know they had a teleportation device that was going to be developed because this is in the year 2045. And Tesla was going to develop that, wish they were talking. And that was going to, you would be able to get the refugees from point A to point B. It would be free for the refugees because transportation is a problem and the cost of it and stuff like that. So that was one of their things. They had a lot of very unique ones. I was just looking at them today.
That's great. So do you have, do you have teams from all grade levels, or is it limited to?
It goes fourth through 12th grade. So right now, I have fourth grade through ninth grade. And I have two fourth grade teams, three fifth grade teams, a sixth, a seventh, an eighth, and a ninth grade. It's kind of picked up in popularity the last few years. Once we started kind of reaching internationals, this is the third year I've had teams that qualified for internationals. And this team in particular took first place last year at state. And as fourth graders, and then took first place this year as fifth graders, so they were defending champions.
Oh, great. Any other comments by board members? Congratulations.
Congratulations, you guys.
Congratulations, so proud of you.
Thanks.
That sounds like fun. I want to ride in the transporter, though.
Yeah, that would be easy, right?
Yeah.
Although it's all, it's like we're all doing that right now. You just walk down the hall and you're at your work, right? So we're all teleporting.
Yep.
Yeah, it's something they they work really hard at. So I'm really proud of them. They put a lot of hours into it. It's a big commitment. They start in August, and now they won't be done till June because the competition for internationals will be June 5th. And they would have gone to Man, Amherst, Massachusetts. But we can't travel. Nobody's traveling right now, so it's a virtual, too.
It's a virtual competition. Wow.
Yeah, another one.
Well, can we note for record also, Principal Cheryl DeRue also is joined in is with is with the students and their teacher today, too.
Hi, everybody. Sorry I'm late. I got bumped out. I don't know what was going on with my computer, but anyway, thank you for honoring them. These kids are awesome kids, and Miss Smith works really hard with them, so I'm really proud of them.
Thank you.
There, Cheryl. There's Yvonne. Yvonne, and I see Veer.
And Veer, I see Veer and Yvonne.
Yeah, they all got shy. They're not so shy at school.
No, not at all. They're not shy at all. And they've worked really hard. So thank you all for honoring them. They've done a great job. Miss Smith works very hard, too.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you again next year when you're defending again.
Yeah, maybe they can do it three years in a row, right?
That's right.
They can teleport us all to the competition.
Yeah.
Thank you all for being here. We'll make sure you get the certificates in the mail as soon as we can.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Okay.
Okay, next item is board member and superintendent update. Does anyone have updates?
I think we have public comments next.
Oh, sorry. Do we have any public comments?
For individuals who've joined the meeting, there are several attendees on tonight's Zoom call. If you would like to make a public comment, please insert your name, address, and the purpose of your topic or the topic you would like to discuss with the board, and we will grant you the three minutes. If you enter that into the Q and A portion on the Zoom screen at the very bottom of your screen, again, click on the Q and A. Give us your name, your address, and the topic you would like to discuss, and we'll make sure we call on you. Also, for the record, the central office is open for this meeting, and Room 40 is open and operational and is broadcasting this for any participants who want to attend in person. And at this point, there are no public participants downstairs. And I see no request to speak at this point, Madam President.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to board member and superintendent update. Does anyone have updates? We've all been in our hoses. Although there are a lot of webinars going on with both forensic and IASB, and I know both of them are have taped them, so you can watch them at your convenience if you didn't catch them catch them live, so.
Madam President, you know, if the, there was an IASB webinar. It was, I think it was titled Ask an Attorney Anything that happened last week. I'm not sure if that has is archived. It was a very interesting webinar because it gave the perspective not just of, of, you know, we've, we've all been attending, or some of us have been attending the forensic webinars, which are, that's the law firm that we use. But this was a webinar that included attorneys from across the state, so it kind of gave a really interesting perspective of what's going on statewide. You know, and I mean, there's, there's different issues across the state, but then some of the issues are are all the same, too. So it sparked a lot of really good conversations, probably worth going back and listening to that.
Okay.
I had just one update, and that was we celebrated our, the latest graduates from our African American Parent Leadership Institute and Hispanic Parent Leadership Institute. This last Saturday, I was honored to be able to speak to our graduates and this year's participants. It's a great opportunity. And a special thank you to Carla Jimenez and all of the participants, or all the facilitators of that wonderful program.
Hey, anything else? All right, moving on for your requests, Mr. Sanders.
Before the board is one Freedom of Information Act request, we've responded to since the last meeting. It will be available on the public website this week and is currently available on the board docs.
Consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, May 4th, 2020. A contract renewal for information services for cataloging software maintenance for backups. Contract renewal for special, or contract for specialized student services, reading comprehension cross cat resource explorations, the intervention solution, cross land literacy. A contract renewal for human resources for frontline absence and substitute management. Contract renewal for information services for solar winds maintenance agreement. A bid from plan operations for equipment purchase, portable bleachers. Proposal from transportation for a proposal to purchase 20 pre-owned school buses.
Are there any items board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hey, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Ms. Kate, so moved.
Ms. Veronica, seconded.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for May 18th, 2020. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $8,301,250.40.
Could I have a motion to approve the listed bills in the amount of $8,301,250.40?
So moved.
Second, Porter.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Thomas?
I'd have to give.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Our next discussion action topic is the secondary art curriculum resource proposal. Dr. Johnson is is here to answer the additional board questions. This was presented at the last work session. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the secondary art curriculum resource proposal.
Could I have a motion to approve the secondary art curriculum resource proposal?
So moved, Veronica.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
And finally, under discussion action is we have the final 2019-2020 school calendar. It's a requirement of the law that we submit a file calendar to the state every year to recognize any emergency days or any other things that have happened. Mr. Rodriguez can walk the word through any of the changes if you so desire. But if you've reviewed it and you're okay with it, before you is the final 2019-2020 school calendar.
Could I have a motion to approve the final 2019-2020 school calendar?
So moved.
Second, Eva.
Any questions or discussion?
And Mrs. Porter?
Yes. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven zero.
Okay, next is other business, CAC update. Are there any CAC people?
I didn't see any CAC people, but Madam President, could we share the news about our former CAC representative who passed away?
Yes.
It's been on social media. Do you want to share?
Yes, I think many of you knew Laurel Alt. She and her husband Kyle have been very involved in the district for years. I think I met her 20 years ago. And Laurel unfortunately passed away in the last couple of days. So I know it's a great loss to the U46 and the community as a whole.
I agree.
Yep, she'll be missed.
Hey. Other business, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under other business is the April financial report, and here to present that is Dale Burnage.
Yes, for April financial report. At the end of April, our total fund balances are $303,972,507, which is a decrease of $21.3 million from March. In April, we received $2 million in property tax revenue. We received $17.9 million in evidence-based funding and $370,000 in state categorical payments. At the end of April, the state owed us $10.8 million. However, we did receive the second quarter articles in May 1st, so that amount is and our federal revenue, which is reimbursed monthly, we received $3.8 million. On the expenditure side, so far, you've taken about 81.1% of the annual budget. And that's about 2% under where we would expect to be at the end of April, which would be around 83%. If there's any questions, I could answer them at this time.
Excuse me, are there any questions?
Hi, John Deveraux here. A couple of quick questions. Well, what type of revenue do we expect in the month of May? Because noting through the end of April, we are at about a $30 million annual budget deficit revenues to expenditure. So we're expecting a big May payment. Have we gotten anything else besides the categoricals? Or is it property taxes and that's up in the air?
Yeah, May is usually a smaller month. June is really when we get the larger revenue amounts, which is the property tax.
Okay.
Page incomes. So we're not expecting a whole lot more in in May, really, other than our usual, we were getting those evidence-based payments. And then we already have the categorical payments. That's good. That's better than we thought it would be. And in June, you'll really see see that gap close with those property taxes.
And June could also tell us whether people are delaying property tax payments, I guess, and what impact it'll have on us.
Yeah, since we are doing the accrual accounting, the, if the cash payments are actually delayed, we'll still be able to record those as half of the tax levy is receivable. So in the financials, you won't see it as having much of an impact. It would be more in the cash balance.
Okay, okay, thank you. And John, you had another question?
Never mind, that was it.
And at some point, we get reimbursed for the CARES, from the CARES bill for some of our expenditures.
Yes, the state just released the application today and had a webinar to give some guidance on the expenditures that qualify. I know we've started to compile a list, so we've already spent some money we've spent this year. We probably haven't paid a lot of these invoices yet because it's things that we've ordered in the last month and a half or so, but some of the money will get reimbursed under the CARES Act.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mrs. Melissa, I have just one quick question to follow up on that property tax. So when when we receive those revenues and in a typical year, we would get a big cash payment then in June because of those receipts, correct?
That's correct.
So this year, because we anticipate there's going to be some delay, as, you know, there's taxpayers that are going to be delaying their payments, will we see that money trickle in then? Or will it be like a secondary?
The I think in Kane County, they said about 50% of the taxes are escrowed. And so all of those escrow payments should still come in on time. And then I would expect some people that could still delay it will probably still pay their their bill in June, just to spread it out between June and September. So I think we'll still see a good amount in June. And then some of it may come in, you may see that after July 1.
For the balance. So it'll just kind of trickle in as as it's received at the county level, then?
They usually will reimburse us once a month, once after the regular regular deadline. So we usually get like one larger payment and then smaller payments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just another quick comment. As Mr. Burnage noted, we did get the applications in today for the CARESAG dollars so that those will start to flow. But then also this week, the General Assembly comes back into session to start wrapping a budget, whatever they're going to do. They need to pass a state budget, which will then give us a lot a lot more intelligence on what we need to put in place for next year's school budget. So we'll make sure that as soon as we have those answers, we'll bring them back to the Board of Finance.
Great.
Another quick question on that CARES Act, because I was asked this at some point last week. The, what is, do we know what, what is the retroactive date?
March 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, work session, Mr. Sanders.
Our first work session item is a, the elementary integrated curriculum proposal. There's a lot of presenters that the board will see listed on the board agenda. But I'm going to hand it over to Celia Banks, who will take the lead and pull in team members as she needs to. So Celia, hopefully you can see the slideshow. And I will click through it for you.
So thank you all for having us today. You can see that Dr. Carpenter, Dr. Schrod, and Sean Karen was unable to join us. Sean Lever is a sixth grade general education teacher, who is part of the early implementer team who created the curriculum writing part of this, and then has been piloting and working on this with us. So the purpose of this proposal is for the adoption of the elementary integrated curriculum, stages two and three, for kindergarten through sixth grade, and to adopt resources to support integrated literacy instruction. Last year, we presented stage one of the integrated curriculum, in which we identified the desire Last year, we presented stage one of the integrated curriculum in which we identified the desired results, the standards for literacy, science, social studies, and social emotional learning that would be taught in each of the six units. There's also a launch unit in each of the integrated units. And by integrating content and social emotional learning in this way, our goal is to support teachers in providing relevant and engaging learning experiences. As a part of last year's proposal, we also recommended resources to support social emotional learning and social studies. This year, we are adding resources to support literacy instruction. The integrated curriculum is aligned, whoops, integrated curriculum is aligned to the strategic plan, and it is our hope that the integrated curriculum, along with the resources to support instruction, will help us to achieve the district strategic plan of educating the whole student. Starting last summer, we provided professional development and access to the social emotional and social studies to begin the implementation of stage one of the integrated curriculum. The curriculum writing team continued to work completing stages two and three and piloting literacy resources to determine which one would best support the instruction, the integrated curriculum units with the goal of full implementation in the fall of the twenty 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 one school year.
And so, of course, we've been following the method of stages of backward design. And the last time we we were talking about stage one, the last year, we've been working and piloting stages two and three, and we'll go and explain that in the next couple of slides. So just a review for stage one. I I believe there was a question about transfer goals and what what we were hoping to get out of integrated curriculum. The transfer goal is really where you see how the what we hope the child will be able to do with life skills towards this by gaining these knowledge and this knowledge and skills. So teachers would look at that transfer goal to say, this is this is really why we're doing it. And then on the next page here, this is stage two. So this is the evidence here. We've worked to create performance tasks that incorporate most of the standards, or at least the priority standards of each unit. Instead of, you know, like an end of the unit social studies test or something, you would have a performance task that incorporates, for example, the one you see up here is a sixth grade one. It's on the geography and it's called the trunk show. So they have to, it's one of the writing standards is a narrative. So a part of it is they have to write a narrative about that spark an idea from a geographic artifact that combines the social studies piece about how life changed or what life was like when people were, let's say, trying to control these floods or whatever from Mesopotamia, and they're taking on a role in writing a bit of a historical fiction piece, really. And then also writing about artifacts and things like that. So it's a multi-skilled activity that the the children will be participating at the end to show their knowledge. And then the next slide here, the learning plan is the the last place now that the teachers know the intent of the instruction and they know the end result of what they need the students to do. The this is the part of the plan that really asks those key questions to help teachers understand what they need to get the children to do and how they're going to do it. This is the how piece. So it is, at first glance, quite a big undertaking, but once you with this with the guidance of the plan and and a little bit of experience, it can be quite, in my in my opinion, quite an amazing piece of work here, so.
The resources that the team selected to support reading instruction are Fontes and Pennell's classroom. And from this, the pieces that we are, we will be purchasing are the guided reading, phonics and word study, shared reading, reading mini lessons, and interactive read alouds. And the board was presented with or was given access to access all of these resources online. And the teachers would have that same access to be able to access the the teacher materials online. Fontes and Pennell is working very hard to have all of the student materials also available online. And in piece, two years ago, we brought to the board and purchased Writing Pathways by Lucy Cockens. And this outlined much, much like we did in our backwards planning, this is the assessment piece of rubrics and learning progressions to assess writing for narrative, informational, and opinion writing. And so the proposed resources that for writing instruction would be Lucy Cockens units of study, which then gives ideas for the lesson planning part instruction. In addition to those resources, the team felt it was time to update our Fontes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, which we've had for probably over twenty years now. Many teachers still have the first edition, and it has now, the third edition has been out for the last year or two. And so if we update that, then we'll be better able to meet the needs of our students and have the online piece as well. In addition to that, Jennifer Sarivallo, who is a partner with Lucy Cockens at the Teachers College, also created teacher support in writing strategies and writing strategies teacher resources, which is full of lessons in English and in Spanish for teachers to use as a part of stage three. So the cost analysis is broken down by each piece, and you can see with each piece that tells you some pieces like the interactive read aloud would be one set for every teacher. Other pieces like the guided reading would be one set for the building that that would be shared then between teachers. So if you had a student in fifth grade who was reading below level, you can still find guided reading materials for that support and instruction. You can see there are also the Spanish pieces and components to supplement all of the English pieces. And as you can see, the total estimated cost on this proposal is seven million, though I did just receive this morning note from the company saying that they were working with our business services department to lower the shipping charges. So the actual cost will probably be less than what's listed here. And if you break down the cost per pupil, which on the November night, November of this year was eighteen thousand. Over the six years, it's approximately sixty four dollars per student. However, it's important to note that many of these materials are building and teacher resources that would last well beyond the six years because they are not consumable. I, for example, still have my Fontes and Pennell guided reading book for inspiration from over twenty years ago when I was in the classroom. A plan for professional development is to begin offering voluntary professional development over the summer dates, as we've done for the last several years. Voluntarily, many of our elementary teachers take advantage of that. And when August twenty twenty comes with the Required Professional Development Day, teachers are then free, who took it voluntarily to make other choices on the Required DCD day. And then in that way, we're able to reach all of our teachers to give them the initial professional development. But especially with this amount of resources, it's going to be very important to continue to offer ongoing professional development. So of course, if we continue to be Zoom wise, we'll be offering Zooms much like we have with with distance learning to support teachers and their use of the integrated curriculum, stages two and three, and the resources. And we will be taking a look at, as we always do, feedback from the professional development to see in what areas we can provide additional support, what questions are still out there. On an ongoing basis, we'll continue to collect feedback and then provide additional professional development. We will be looking at administration.
I think Celia froze up. Dr. Carpenter, you want to finish this one up and?
Um, so I think Celia was on to the second bullet point that we will review administrator and teacher surveys and analyze our common assessment data and state assessment data.
I think the other important piece of feedback that we received a lot through our data reviews this last, over the last year and a half, that the cabinet's been doing at our elementary sites is the the overwhelming cry and need for resources such as this in our classrooms. So it's a pleasure to present this for the board, knowing that when it when it does make its way into our classrooms next year, you'll have a lot of teachers really thankful to have this as a resource in their classrooms. And Celia, I see your back, so I don't know if I wrapped that up okay for you. Is there anything else you want to add before the board asks questions?
Um, I think the only piece, and I think maybe you were alluding to it, is that we also considered our proposed phased approach. So that would be a lot of learning for teachers to try to learn all of those different literacy resources, resources, along with integrated curriculum, along with if we're also doing distance learning. And so we had proposed to do, for example, the benchmark assessment, which we already do, and it's just an update of it, along with the reading support to start there and then move on to the writing piece next year. So there are several different suggestions that we will look to see which which way would be the best to support our teachers and not overwhelm them with new learning.
Great. And I want to thank the team, you and all the teachers who developed, went through the curriculum writing process, reviewed the different resources. And I mean, this was a multi-year proposition. So thank you for all that work. And Madam President, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a statement. I heard you say that many of the sets will be shared among the entire building. Will each grade level get their own? Because I know in having used something very similar to this, that one of the needs that that we, one of the things that we realized was that there was a shortage of kits or sets available because kids in a class or grade level are on different levels. So you want to make sure that you assess that situation and make sure there is availability within the grade level as well as within the school so that you have enough when you make the purchase.
Absolutely. And I will share too that the one thing that is really one per building is the guided reading sets. And if you take a look at the breakdown, it is fifty titles per every level, A through Z, so it's thousands of books. So there will be plenty for the teachers to to cross pollinate and share the different titles, the six packs that they have.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I had a quick question. So during the presentation, there was kind of, I heard that there was a lot of mention of the resources being online. Are you kind of pushing towards for the teachers to be teaching more online? Or would there be more like printed handouts for students to read from?
So ideally, we'll be back in buildings and we'll be able to use the actual books. But in the in the case that we would continue to with distance learning or need to go back to some type of blended learning, we would have the option of being able to project the books for students to read during guided reading and or for the interactive read aloud so that the students could see the book. And we would, we would not be asking teachers or students to print any books from this resource.
Okay, yes, because this is, as a student, I really understand the importance of like needing to touch things when I read, especially when you're in those early stages of learning to read. It's very important.
Absolutely. Huge fan of books, hence literacy director coordinator.
Other questions?
This is Melissa. I just wanted to jump in and thank the team for answering the questions that I sent. I know I sent a number of questions, so I really appreciate the work that you guys put into that. This is a big lift. I mean, if you look at the the proposal and see the number of people that are on this team, it's really impressive, the work that's been done. So I really appreciate all of that. And I know that we're, you know, it's difficult to know exactly how this implementation is going to work and, you know, how those phases are going to work because, you know, there's so many unknowns right now. So I just, I appreciate the, you know, being upfront about that. I'm glad that Fontes and Pennell is putting these resources online in case we do have to do some form of blended learning or remote learning next fall. They're not going to charge any user extra for that. Okay, that's great. So but I I won't have you go through all the the list of questions that I that I asked. They're they're up on board docs and anybody can see those. But I appreciate the 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 answers that I got. I think you answered all my questions.
We did try to integrate some of those answers into the presentation as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions? I wanted to thank you, you and another presenters tonight for giving us the access, the online access. It was it was useful to be able to see these these items. I did have one question in addition to what I had asked earlier, and that is the the performance tasks you have for the integrated curriculum look like they could really engage students. Have you had much discussion about how teachers can collaborate on those to to develop them? Not only teachers within a school, but across grade levels or grade levels across schools.
So I I think we've always tried to say that this is a living document. Sean and I were just having a discussion earlier today about the fact that we will continue to like provide support teachers and to encourage them to collect other pieces of evidence in addition to the performance tasks that the curriculum writing team has written. But I'm trying to move that paradigm shift towards inquiry-based learning and problem-based learning and the whole idea that that we do teach students to be able to use their knowledge and apply it to real life situations is part of where we're hoping to head.
And I like the idea of teachers being able to add their own, I mean, as you say, a living document so they can contribute their ideas to it and share with others. Any other questions? Hey, thank you very much. Before we go to the next item, I want to just welcome Olivia Howell, our student board member. Welcome to your first board, full board meeting, Olivia.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here.
All right, Mr. Sanders, next item.
Our next item is the middle school family and consumer science culinary and personal success and culinary and leadership skills curriculum proposal. There's a, again, on the board docs, you'll see all the presenters who are with us tonight. For the purposes of the initial presentation, I'll hand it over to Tracy Stewart, our Coordinator of Career and Technical Education. Ms. Stewart.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I am joined tonight by all the members of the curriculum writing team, in fact. And so, Mr. Sanders, can you advance the next one? Thank you. And so they're listed here and as well as in the presentation. And so our goal was to have teachers representing multiple grade levels and schools across the district. And so that's how that team got combined. And so the purpose of the presentation is to introduce the curricular revisions to the middle school family consumer sciences curriculum. The revision will give students an opportunity to select classes that better align to their own interest and engage in those areas of interest in a more extensive way. So currently, students in seventh and eighth grade have the option to engage in a rotation, which consists of four nine-week sessions of computers, art, family consumer sciences, and project lead the way. With the new elective options, students are able to take semester-long courses that are more aligned to their interests and will prepare them to make a more informed decision as they look to selecting a pathway that they might want to choose during high school. And so the process for the revision began with selecting and building the curriculum writing team. And so we had three middle school family consumer science teacher, one high school family and consumer science teacher. And then we also had consultation from an early childhood education professor from Elgin Community College. And then, like I previously mentioned, we had the teacher leader for educational design and implementation, Dorian Roberts, as well as myself. And so here again are the members of the writing team. And so as we began the process, we sent out the call to committee and reviewed the applications to build the team. The committee convened in June of twenty nineteen, and we began the process with some professional learning around understanding by design and the framework for the curriculum process. And then we began to identify standards and align those to learning targets for students. And we created units and assessments both aligned to SPLA. And the team also identified curricular resources and professional development that would be needed to implement the curriculum successfully. So as a result of the work completed, the team is recommending the adoption of these two new middle school electives, family consumer sciences culinary and personal success, and family consumer sciences culinary and leadership skills. Family and Consumer Sciences Culinary and Personal Success, and Family and Consumer Sciences Culinary and Leadership Skills. And so here we have an overview of the units and contents that are offered in each course. And while the units are similar, there is no redundancy in content or learning experiences for the student. So while completing these units, students will have the opportunity to explore skills such as communication, teamwork, and collaboration, as well as be introduced to culinary skills such as safety sanitation and the hospitality industry. A new addition to this curriculum is the Family Relationships and Child Development and Care Units. During these units, students examine the structure and function of families, as well as the influence of culture and community. And they're introduced to education and human development concepts. And the college and career readiness units are also new and allow students to engage in personal reflection around their interests and aptitudes that will lead to career exploration, as well as goal-setting for high school and beyond. And so here are the resources that have been identified for the curriculum. So the first textbook Adventures in Food and Nutrition is the most recent edition of the text that the teachers are already using. And then we are adding in the Life Skills in the 21st Century. And this is for the additional content that's covered in the Leadership for Life, as well as the College and Career Readiness Units. And then in order to support the increase in extended use of the kitchen appliances through the lengthened culinary units, new appliances are indicated across all sites. And then we also have additional media and technology resources that can be seen here. And so here is a breakdown of the textbook resources. And both, both resources offer six-year online access to both students and teachers. And there is a supplementary student workbook for the Life Skills in the 21st Century textbook as well. And then here are the, is the breakdown of cost for the additional resources, as well as the professional development. And so the total for the curriculum is $358,326. And over the six-year period of the curriculum cycle, it would be $35.42 per student. And so for the professional development, the teachers identified a number of learning opportunities that they could engage in to support the implementation of the curriculum. So first would be a food safety and sanitation course and certification exam. We've already identified this can be offered online or in person, depending on scheduling. The teachers have also identified multiple areas or units that they would like to implement breakout boxes. And they thought that they could have some support and maybe some learning from the LRC staff, because they, they have those available to them. They've also identified some learning that they can do around their financial literacy curriculum, which is an online, a free online program, as well as a child development concept refresher, so that they can revisit and refresh their contents and concepts that will be taught in those units. Of course, continuing professional development around standards-based grading and assessment instructional practices. And then lastly, the team thought it would be beneficial to have some professional development for supporting our language learners through the Illinois Resource Center. So next steps that we've identified to implement the curriculum successfully would be to begin the professional development for the courses to begin in the fall of August 2020. And as indicated by the curriculum cycle, the team will use data obtained from common assumptive assessments, as well as teacher and student feedback, to revise units and assessments as needed. And we also plan to use any feedback gathered through formal or informal walkthroughs to support the curriculum being implemented with fidelity across the district. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from board members?
This is Melissa. I just again want to thank both for this proposal and the next one. I know I asked a number of questions and those answers are, again, on board docs, so I just want to thank you for answering my questions. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that one of the questions I asked is, because this resource proposal is so intensive on things like equipment and we don't know what we're going to be looking at come the school year, this, this fall for the 2020, 2021 school year. One of the things that was mentioned is that we may be able to delay some of the equipment purchases. I know that there's quotes out there for those equipment purchases. So what, how long are those quotes good for? Would we, we have to go back through that process then to re-quote out all of that equipment?
Yeah, so we would have to, if we were to, let's say, have the stoves installed this year and then delay any of the other supplemental appliances till next year. And we would have to go ahead and get new quotes, but we have really, really great partnership with ABT. And we, I work really closely with the reps there to, to get really, you know, the best possible price. And they, they usually give us a quantity discount and try and make it as affordable as possible. And I can even speak to the rep and say like, hey, if we have to push this off till next year, when would this price be, you know, good for? And at what point would I have to start getting new quotes to, to identify the, the amount that they might be?
Okay. And is there any danger of not being able to get the resources that we actually want? I mean, I know that's a really tough question to ask.
So I would say that if, like, for example, if they discontinued a model, we would have to revisit something like that as far as the appliances. But I, I know that the team has been really cognizant of making sure that we are identified, like the specifics of all the resources, so that, you know, we're being really responsible in how we purchase them. And then as far as the, like, educational resources, the textbooks and stuff, I, I'm pretty sure that those are all available. The Adventures in Food and Nutrition, they're undergoing, like, they're completing, putting all of those available resources online for the updated edition. And so I've already had a conversation with the textbook rep that said, you know, if, if there's any problem, they're going to give us full access to the 2016 version. And then if there's, once it flips over to the 2021 edition, they'll get full access to that too. So there should be a seamless transition if any of the resources are delayed.
Okay. Go, sorry.
On the bidding piece too, as we've noted earlier, Celia noted that if we stick Bruce Phelps on them, they might actually come in a lot lower, so.
Yes, I've been working with the team pretty closely on all of the quotes, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then just quickly, back on the, I think it's slide 13, where you talk about the professional development. Can you just quickly explain the breakout box training? That's not something that I'm familiar with.
Sure. So breakout boxes are a really engaging way to have students practice a lot of different skills. And so most of them would be content-oriented. And so it's, it's like a breakout room or escape room, but all, all the information's inside the box. And so teachers create a scavenger hunt of sorts with content-related clues. And so once they find the answer to that clue, then they get a number to the combination to the lock. And so ultimately, whatever's inside the box is that, you know, how the materials they're going to use to build their final project or something that completes that, that unit of instruction or gives them the opportunity to demonstrate mastery. And so they're really good for communication and critical thinking and teamwork, because it's, it's very, you know, realistic to the students, it's authentic learning, and it's fun. And, and there's lots of different, you know, resources out there to, you know, you can use invisible ink and you have to have a black light to find the clue. So it's very engaging and students and teachers really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next proposal is also Tracy Stewart presenting, along with her team. I'll start the slideshow for you, Tracy. And this one is the Middle School Family and Consumer Science Essential Technology Proposal.
So I'm actually going to turn this one over to Doreen Roberts, and this is for our Middle School Essential Technology Proposal.
Thank you. The process, I'll wait for you to, there you go. The process for writing the Middle School Technology Curriculum was very similar to the Family and Consumer Sciences Curriculum. The team included three middle school computers teachers, the coordinator for CTE, and myself. All the members of the team are here this evening. There's Tom from Larson Middle School, Drew from Eastview Middle School, James from Ellis Middle School, Tracy Stewart, the coordinator for Career and Technical Education, and me, the teacher leader for Pathways Design and Implementation. Essential Technology Curriculum Revisions offer more opportunities for middle school students to engage, explore, and develop their skills in the area of technology. Currently, the middle school students have a nine-week rotation schedule of classes, which includes computers. The development of the semester-long Essential Technology Courses provides more time for in-depth learning in the content area. This not only prepares students for college and career academies in the high schools, but supports students with an interest in our magnet academies like Beacon, which is digital and media arts at South Elgin High School, and the visual and performing arts at Larkin High School. The Essential Technology Team and the FACTS Team met concurrently to develop the curriculum presented tonight. The call to committee was sent out last spring, and the teams began meeting in June of 2019. The first two sessions focused on the Understanding by Design process. From there, we selected the standards for the curriculum, developed the units and assessments, and selected the curriculum resources, and identified professional development needed to implement the curriculum. The Essential Technology Team developed two courses, Introduction to Computers and Interactive Media. You can see that both courses consist of nine units. There are eight units focusing on specific skill development and conceptual understandings. Each course's culminating unit is a self-directed passion project, where students showcase their learning. Although several of the unit titles repeat from Introduction to Computers to Interactive Media, the content within the units does not. For example, there's a coding unit in each course, but the program used in each coding unit is different. And the units are differentiated to meet students at their skill level. So students can take one or both courses in any order and receive a differentiated learning experience. Our committee recommends the adoption of the Essential Technology Introductions to Computers course and Interactive Media course for the 2020, 2021 school year. The team has consulted with the Information Services Department to determine resources to support the curriculum as designed. Based on recent events and the impact on schools and instruction, our team is continuing to consult with the Information Service, with Information Services to explore possibilities for implementation of this curriculum in the educational setting moving forward. Along with the instructional resources, the team has identified professional development teachers of this curriculum will engage in. The professional development includes International Society for Technology Education Certification. The ISTI are the standards the curriculum is aligned to. Therefore, being an expert in these standards is essential. Completing project-based learning professional development, which is aligned to our district's standards-based learning and assessment guidelines and practices, this will support differentiated instruction and an inquiry and project-based approach to teaching and learning. We also expect teachers to engage in professional development to continue to develop instructional strategies to support our language learners and seek out self-identified professional development in the skills and concepts taught throughout the courses. Upon approval of the curriculum, teachers will begin professional development and preparation for teaching the courses in August of 2020. As the courses are implemented with fidelity, students and staff, student and staff data will be collected and analyzed, so revisions can be made accordingly as per the curriculum cycle. So thank you for your time this evening, and may we answer any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick comment. So as a member of the Beacon Academy at South Elgin, I just want to say I love the idea of this whole curriculum. I was, I had a quick question. Is there, I saw there was, at the end, there was some video editing and audio softwareing. And I was wondering if the students would ever happen to have an opportunity to come visit us in our studio at Beacon and maybe talk to some of us to see if maybe the Magnet Academy would be something that they would like to do.
We actually talked about that a lot during the design process and how we could, how we could connect more with the Beacon Academy and create those experiences. And overall, with, working with the magnet schools, we're looking at more ways to make those connections across all the, all the magnet schools and the middle school experience.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
This is Melissa. I don't have any additional questions, but I just, I, I really love the way that this is set up and the focus on project-based learning, and especially that passion project at the end. I think it really sets students up at a young age to be in a position where they, they're, they're used to, you know, things like capstones that are becoming more prevalent in higher education. So that, that it's, the whole, the whole setup is great. I really like it.
Any other questions? I have one question. Is, will this replace, I know we have PLTW as an option in middle school now. Will this replace it or just be another course?
It's just another course, so that view is an option also.
Anyone else?
Along those lines, John here. I, I recall, was there a separate course proposal for computer programming that was taking place in middle school?
Not, not in middle school, that I'm aware of.
No, okay. So this, the, obviously the presentation we just saw, plus this PLTW, is, is what else rounds out sort of the, the middle school options?
For, for electives? So you have, you have Essential Technology, you have Family and Consumer Sciences, you have the art options, the fine arts options, and then the PLTW options.
Okay, good. And maybe what's in the PLTW, maybe that was evolving a little bit to what I was thinking about with the computer programming. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
And last for a circular presentation, but certainly not least, is Jacob Van de Mortel presenting the Heritage Spanish Proposal. Jacob, you want to take the lead on this one? Or Dr. Schroed? Can people hear me?
Sorry, cut out on me. This is Trish.
Hello, everyone. I am here tonight to present to you a revised curriculum for our Heritage Spanish program with a lot of exciting changes. And so if you could take me to the next slide, just want to talk through really the three key parts here. Obviously, we're seeking that you would approve the curriculum assessments, rubrics, resources for Heritage Spanish Language Curriculum. It is worth pointing out here that we are defining, there is sort of a accepted definition of what a heritage learner is in the language learning world. And the definition that we define in this curriculum is a student who has Spanish experience in the home, but with little or no formal education in Spanish language. So it's really important to point out that these are not our dual-language students. Our dual-language students have had many years of formal education. And so this is a different subset of students who have Spanish experience around the house. They may be familiar with it, they may hear it, they may speak it, but they've never been formally educated in it. So it's a different subset of students, which has been dropping over the years as our dual-language program goes. But we still have these students. We want to make sure we're preparing them and giving them the best opportunities. And so what the program seeks to do is align it with the current standards, condense it a little bit, and have it culminate with an opportunity for our students to take AP Spanish Language and Culture and potentially get college credit there, or take that and then even still perhaps have time to take some of the dual-credit Spanish offerings that we offer in all five of our high schools in a partnership with Elgin Community College. Excellent. This aligns our strategic plan, because it elevates the opportunity for student achievement with those college credit opportunities towards the end. And as you'll see in a moment, we have not had a curriculum, a unified curriculum around this in a very long time. And we have discovered a really effective and engaged staff in the writing of this. And so there's a lot of text, and I apologize, but there's really four things that we sought to rectify when we set out to write this curriculum. One was the oldest teacher we had on our team had been teaching here for 13 years, and they did not have a new curriculum, or they've not had a new curriculum since then. So we wanted to make sure we brought it up to speed. Additionally, just last year, the Illinois State Board of Education came out with its new learning standards, which are aligned to the American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages. And we've since started having all these AP classes, and we wanted to align it to the AP themes. And so what we did is we aligned it to the new Illinois state standards, which are the national standards. We wrote our curriculum units thematically, so that they We wrote our curriculum units thematically so that they align with the AP, the College Board test, so the kids, when they get there, they're more prepared. And we also incorporated social-emotional learning standards in there as well in every single unit. Additionally, this is going to help create a common experience that guarantees a high level of rigor for our students. And then lastly, and perhaps one of the most important things that we heard from our counselors and from our teachers, is there needed to be a better way to place our students in Heritage. So this provides guidance for the most appropriate placement of our Heritage students and how that program can complement the dual-language program, not at odds at all. So the process, like many of the presentations you've seen tonight, was to map the curriculum and go to the Professional Development Committee and all the things that we typically do. But it is worth pointing out that we also, we began this process in 2019, and we, I apologize, that's actually for a different presentation. Same steps as always, and we are finally here in front of you, and we're, our team is very excited about it. It's worth pointing out here that this is currently every Heritage Spanish teacher in our district. And so we had full buy-in. We've got a really engaged and amped-up team to take this into the future, and we're really excited. We're going to have to hire some new folks because we're going to have it in the middle schools next year, and one of our teachers is going off to serve in the National Guard next year, so we're going to have to hire a sub to replace them. But the team we've got in place is fantastic. So we are seeking the selection of our online anchor resource, some Spanish literature readers to be like class sets to provide authentic resources, some supplemental technology supports to help the online resource, and then some small staff costs associated with sending teachers into buildings to test and make sure they're placed appropriately. So the resource we're looking at, you can see on your screen, there's an anchor text we're calling it. It's Galleria de lengua y cultura by Vista Higher Learning. And since we wrote our curriculum based on the College Board's thematic units, and we wrote it in a way that we thought built best for us, it was really difficult to find textbooks that went in the same order. But we really liked what we saw from Galleria, and so what Galleria is going to actually do for us is they're going to take, everything in our curriculum is in their levels, but they're going to take and put it online in the order that fits our curriculum. So where I'm saying it's Galleria 1 and 2, because sometimes Galleria 2 will be used at Level 1, and sometimes Level 1 will be used at Level 2, because it's based on the thematic unit that we're using in our curriculum, which is really exciting that they were able to work with us that way. Additionally, we're proposing for each level a class set of resource, we would call them literature readers, that are appropriate for each level. They have things like poetry, literature, some of your classic texts. One of the things that Galleria does really well is it provides like modern resources, radio commercials and things like that. This gives us a more classical setup. We're also asking for microphone headsets for our students on their Chromebooks so they can interact with the online support from Galleria, and then two of our teachers do not have a projector, and so the materials need projection equipment, and so we're looking for touch displays to go with those as well. So our recommendations for implementation would be that next year, we would begin this on the school year 2021. Similar to our other foreign language offerings, we'd like to kind of rename them. Currently, it's sort of confusing. We have Heritage Spanish 1, 2, which would just become Heritage 1. Heritage Spanish 3, 4 becomes 2. And then we would ask that Heritage Spanish 5, 6, and Honors Heritage 5, 6, we currently have one of each, that they would simply become one class, Honors Heritage 3. And that's because, just like our regular world language curriculum, when we get to that level, we believe that it's honors work, the rubrics are actually the same as the regular level. Additionally, we would like to give students the opportunity to do Heritage Spanish 1 in the middle school. Just like we have regular Spanish 1 in the middle school, it'd be 1A and 1B, take Level 1 and split it across both years of middle school. And then additionally, we currently have a Heritage Spanish 7, 8 set to run next year, but we believe that a better placement for those students would be in AP Spanish Language and Culture. And so our proposal doesn't have a Heritage Spanish 4. It just has students enrolling in AP Spanish Language, because they'll have those skills by then, and we'd like to give them the opportunity to earn some college credit demonstrating those skills. And then lastly, this is where we can really complement our dual-language program. We have students, dual-language students who are currently in ALA 1 and then in ALA 2, and if they have IEP minutes in reading or writing, they're having those IEP minutes met in their ALA classes, and when they're done with ALA, they go on to either dual-credit with ECC or perhaps AP Spanish Language or AP Spanish Literature, and the opportunity to have their IEP minutes met by a specialized teacher in a classroom sort of disappears. And so what we're proposing is that our ALA students, sorry, dual-language students with IEP minutes in reading and writing could take a co-taught Heritage 3 class, co-taught between a Gen Ed world language teacher and a special education teacher. Each high school would have one of these, and we could ensure that those students' needs are being met in that way as well. And it would also do a great job preparing them to take the AP Spanish Language test as well. This is recommendations around training for our teachers. So again, we're very fortunate, all of our teachers on the team, or all of our teachers who teach us were on the team. We know we're going to have some new teachers. So you can see there's several sessions of preparing them, both with a new curriculum and online resource training. And additionally, if they're going to have a co-teacher working with their special ed collaborator. Additionally, we're going to have special educators in Spanish language classrooms for the first time, and so we'd like to make sure we utilize our existing co-teaching program to help our, both Spanish teachers and specialized teachers collaborate and get on the same page. And then one of the things we heard loud and clear throughout this entire process from counselors and teachers and really everybody, was that it's a little bit confusing who goes where. You know, are you a Heritage student, are you a dual-language student? What if I was a dual-language student? What if I just moved in? Where do I go? And so we want to create some really clear visual, written, and face-to-face communication for our counselors to help clarify, especially situations like students who move in with Spanish language, people who drop out of dual-language, dual-language students with IEPs, like I just mentioned. We want to make sure it's really clear where they go and who to ask and what sorts of data would help direct that. You can see the cost here, again, for that anchor text, which is primarily, I mean, it comes with physical text, but it's primarily an online resource with a six-year license. We're looking at about $128,000, and you can see the one-time text purchases for those in-class readers that we have. Sorry, I can't talk right now, kiddo. And then some technology, both displays and microphone headsets. Thank you, Maisie. Just kind of picture. It's very sweet. The technology to help support the online resources. The professional development from the resource, the VHL, would be free, and then the only other associated cost would be paying for subs. We, I think we've got it at 10 hours, or 10 days each year to send our existing Heritage teachers down into the middle schools, or perhaps even to go meet with a new move-in student and assess them and use our rubrics to put them in the correct class. So the total cost is $209,962.78, which is a per pupil $269.18, and I think the most important cost in there is when you split that over the six-year licensing, we're looking at $44.86 per student per year. It was really important for us to make sure we had adequate online materials going into next year, and so like all of our curriculum, we intend to revise the curriculum every year, work with the assessment data and see how it goes. But additionally, we really want to evaluate implementation and usage of the technology components and make sure that we, our teachers are getting and using what we're paying for, and obviously monitor any professional development needs of our current teachers or any new teachers as the program evolves. And that concludes this presentation.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. This is Veronica. Can you remind me again, what is ALA? Which class is that? ALE?
ALA is Spanish Language Arts, so it is our, it is the ELA class in Spanish for our dual-language students.
ELA, or English, okay. And you talk about the co-taught Heritage 3, but I didn't quite see that co-taught would be available in Heritage 1 and 2. Would it be?
No. So typically, if a student who had Spanish language skills and IEPs, an IEP for reading and writing, typically they'd be in an ALA class rather than Heritage to have that's, and so there are co-taught ALA classes currently, and then you go there.
For those levels? Okay, that's great. And I just want to say how absolutely thrilled, thrilled, thrilled I am to see this proposal. I brought it, you know, we've talked about it here and there over the years as you've been working on this, and, you know, I had personal experiences of not having Heritage classes available to me and faking my way through school. So as a parent now, I'm so thrilled that parents are going to have the opportunity to put their children in a class that will actually benefit them, and they won't, you know, just fake their way like some kids can, just because they speak Spanish at home. And just the incredible opportunity that this provides students, especially with the AP and possible credits, you know, through ECC. I mean, you know, I was only exposed to it my freshman year in college, and then moved colleges and didn't have it again. So, but I really understand the value of Heritage Spanish specifically for students who are growing up in a Spanish environment but not in dual-language, or walk into, you know, a school having moved here. And so it's just, I'm so grateful. I cannot tell you how grateful I am.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So this is Melissa. I have just a quick question on, I imagine one of the hardest pieces of this is that placement piece, right, of getting the kids into the correct class. So are you using any written assessments or oral language assessments to make those placements?
So there's actually a couple of different angles we can use. The rock would be our proficiency rubrics in both, or sorry, both, all three, interpersonal communication, presentational communication, so that's like speaking and writing, and then interpretive, that's listening and reading. And so we, there's a number of ways to assess on each of those rubrics, and so it is sort of a phased, we do have a written test that we can give, but first, we would typically have a student sit down with one of the teachers and do a really short interpersonal back-and-forth. And in that interpersonal, you can both assess the interpersonal as well as the interpretive and the presentational, if you ask the right questions. So we have that, that's the first step. If it needs clarification, especially around the written and the reading, we have a test we can give. And additionally, we also have, I mean, our rubrics align with the American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages standards, which, there's a test called the Apple Test that we actually use for the seal of biliteracy. And if we really get into a kind of, between a rock and a hard place where there's disagreement, perhaps between the teacher and the parent, or the counselor, and if there's not agreement, we can give that Apple Test and get really rock-solid third-party data to help determine where they go as well.
Okay, all right, thanks. I mean, it's, I'm glad to hear that there's a collaborative process with that between the family, the teachers, the counselors, so that everybody's on board and making that decision. And I'm really, I'm really glad that you've come up with a solution for getting those specialized services for kids as they progress through the program. That's a huge piece. I'm really glad that's being addressed, so thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question. So as far as the process goes for assessing which class, you know, the student would be into, what part of the process are they being evaluated?
So typically, we're going to capture most students at registration time. So whether they're signing up in middle school, going to the high school, or if they've just moved into a new high school, that's when we would say we need to evaluate you and see where you belong. And so I believe the way the language is actually written in the proposal, anytime a student enters a high school class for the first time, they should be evaluated. The only reason we're not evaluating them in the middle school is there's really only one option in the middle school. Only Level 1 is available, so whether they're super accelerated or not, they're going to go to the same place. But when they enter that high school, that's when we want to test them and figure out what the best place for them is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. This sounds like a great class, classes.
Yes, and thank you to all the presenters. I know you had, thank you also to the board. This time of year, when we bring all these curriculum proposals forward, I know it can be a little bit overwhelming, and it's a large group of presentations in one night. We appreciate your patience and reading through all the documents. So on behalf of administration, thank you, board, for your time. I also recognize that we have a lot of teachers on here that have been Zooming all day long, and will probably be Zooming tomorrow. So if you do not, do not feel obligated to stick around for the rest of the meeting unless you so choose to, we'd love to have you, but you're also free to go be with your families as well. So thank you all.
Thank you for all the presentations. They were very educational for me. I had some of the same questions that Melissa had and Sue had, so thank you for your questions, and thank you for answering them.
Oh, and Jacob earns the award for dealing with interruptions in the most wonderful parent-focused manner possible. I loved it.
You should have your child actually answer all the questions.
Considered a victory. I have five kids, and only three of them came in.
Oh, we only noticed, I only noticed one. Well, good job.
Okay. All right, moving on, Mr. Sanders, work session resolution.
Our first and only item under the work session resolutions is the resolution for the display and public hearing on the Northern Kane County Regional Vocational System Budget for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Burnage, could you just quickly walk the board through the purpose of this resolution?
Yes, so this is an annual resolution. Just a reminder that vocational system budgets are required to be adopted by August 31st, which is one month earlier than school district budgets. The tentative FY21 Northern Kane County Regional Vocational System Budget will be presented at the June 15th, 2020 Board of Education Meeting, and the resolution sets June 16th, 2020, as the date the budget goes on the 30-day public display. And July 20th of 2020 is the date of the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on, work sessions, contracts over $25,000.
And our first is a contract for curriculum instruction with Blue Streak Math Intervention Resource Adoption. Here to answer any questions the board may have is Mr. Phelps, Senior Business Official of Business Services. He'll be here for all work session items, obviously. Dr. Trish Schroed, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Amy N'Gente, Math Coordinator. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Blue Streak Education in the amount of $65,000, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? I know we had a number of questions that were entered in writing, so that's available on board docs for people who are interested in seeing that. And thank you for answering those. I know both Melissa and I had questions. Okay, guess the next item.
All right, next, we have a contract renewal for curriculum instruction for ST Math Intervention Resource Renewal. Same presenters. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal from Mind Research Institute in the amount of $102,000, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions?
This is Melissa. I'll just thank you again for the answering the questions for both this proposal and the one previous to this for the Blue Streak. And thank you for including the data of the progression of how many students have been using ST Math from the 2018-19 school year to the 1920 school year. It seems like there's a lot of benefit to using this, so I'm glad that we're making that progression, so I just hope that we can continue that into next year, especially if we have a somewhat disrupted environment. I hope that this can, you know, can have some benefits to a lot more students, so thanks for that.
We've certainly seen an uptick in use with being in distance learning, so that's encouraging as well.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, when you look at those bands, it does seem like there's some really good benefits to using that program. So I'm glad that it's being used even through remote learning these last couple of months.
Would it also be available over the summer for kids, since they'll still have their Chromebooks?
Absolutely.
Hey, next item, Mr. Sanders.
Under our next items are work session bids and proposals. The first is a proposal from curriculum instruction for Kami Distance Learning Resource Adoption. Dr. Schroed will continue for this presentation. Administration recommends approval of the contract from Notable Inc. in the amount of $40,000, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure qualifies for reimbursement under the CARES Act, and the cost is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, next item.
Next is a proposal, also from curriculum instruction, for learning A to Z, distance learning resource adoption. for Learning A to Z Distance Learning Resource Adoption. Administration recommends approval of the contract from Learning A to Z in the amount of $194,830.62 and requests authorization for district administration to execute, execute related documents. This expenditure also qualifies for reimbursement under the Federal CARES Act and is included in the budget for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Are there any questions?
This is Melissa. I have just one quick question. I did ask beforehand, and it was answered, that we're looking at purchasing this resource solely because of the anticipation that we may have some use for this under remote learning for the coming school year. And so this is a one-year contract. That's the shortest term that we could get on the contract. It just popped in my head, the, the resource before this for Kami, is that the same setup where we'll be doing just a one-year?
Yes. Both of them are one-year intervals.
Just for the purpose of, of remote learning, if we need to go down that route?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, next item, Mr. Sanders.
Finally, we have a proposal from Information Services for Smart Board Replacement. Laura Macias, the Director of Information Services, is also joined on the Zoom call. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Tierney and Pace Systems, Inc. in the amount of, in the amounts of $232,300 and $110,000 respectively, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund, and the cost is included in the budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. And we know, I know board members also asked questions about this purchase as well, and we did respond in the document that's posted on Board Docs.
Are there any questions? I had asked the question about how old the smart boards were that we're replacing. And I guess about 100 of them were over nine to 15 years old. How many smart boards do we have altogether? Is this going to be something that's going to be recurring? That every year or two, we're going to need to replace older ones?
We have currently 364 smart boards. And we, we have planned them throughout the A&amp;O plan.
Okay, we do have an A&amp;O plan, okay.
Yeah, so we have the H and Osolescence Plan in place. And these are the oldest, the first 100. The other was still holding, holding out. But you'll, you'll see me again next year with, with more, more proposals for this.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, since that is the last item, I believe. Yes, yes. Okay. So I need a motion to go into close. So can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, the setting of price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
I'm moved. This is Veronica Nolan.
It's second.
Hey, roll call, please.
That was, that was Thomas, right?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you all. We'll see some of you over on the other side.
Yep.